I'm calling to order the Corte Madera Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, November 12th. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf.
Commissioner Metcalfe, Commissioner Bundy, Commissioner Chase, Commissioner Lee, Commissioner Bendel.
Good evening. At the beginning of every meeting, we open it to public comment for something that is not on tonight's agenda. So if you want to make a statement about anything that you would like the commission to hear that's not on tonight's agenda, you have three minutes. So if you feel so, please step up to the microphone. We do have a taker. All right.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. I've been before you before. My name is Jeremiah Mock. I live down on Pixley, and I'm a professor at University of California, San Francisco, in Public Health. I spoke with you once before about the consideration of cannabis ordinance making here, as you'll recall, and also testified before the town council about the adoption of a flavor ban for flavored tobacco products and vaping products. And I just wanted to bring to your attention that before and since the time of the adoption of both of those ordinances, we continue to have a problem in Town Park with regard to smoking of cigarettes, vaping, and cannabis use. And my sons play down there every day, and we're at the park quite regularly. I find cigarette butts all over the place. We see kids vaping along the skate park area. Last week, my son, who's a ref and soccer ref, could smell people smoking cannabis. So I would really urge the town to consider putting up some definitive signage. And there's probably consideration of putting up signage now since there's a recent change in the dog laws, and people are not very clear exactly about that either. So I think that if you look at the state requirements for smoking at a distance from tot lots and all recreational areas, and you plot it out, I'm pretty sure the entire area of Town Park is actually under state regulation for not allowing any smoking. And I think it would be a step in the right direction for our community to make it really clear that this is an entirely smoke-free zone, and that people need to respect that fact. Many people don't know. I often will tell people, hey, you can't smoke here. And they say, I had no idea. They're not offended by it, but they just aren't uninformed. So I'd appreciate it if you would define a really clear perimeter around the park so that we can get rid of the problem of secondhand smoke exposure and waste. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to make a statement? Seeing none, then we'll close this public comment section, and we'll go directly to our new hearing items. So tonight, we have a hearing called 223 Baltimore Avenue. It is design review application PL 20190084 for the demolition of an existing residence and the construction of a new 3,114 square foot, single-story residence with a 665 square foot attached garage at 223 Baltimore Avenue. The room is full here tonight. I'm presuming that most of you are here for that. Is there anybody who's not here for that tonight? Okay. So I didn't think anybody was here to listen to the project overview of Corte Madera Objective Design Standards, but...
You should stick around for that.
Yeah, that's scintillating stuff. So Adam will do a report on that. But tonight, this is a hot topic, so Martha will take this away. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Chase, Commissioners, and members of the public. This evening, the Planning Commission will be considering a design review application for a new single-story residence at 223 Baltimore Avenue. The project also includes the demolition of the existing residence. And the town has received several comment letters since the packets were distributed. We received one over the weekend, and then several more today. Copies of these letters have been provided to the commission, and copies were also placed in the back of the room. If you did not get copies and are interested in them, they will be placed on the website as well, or you can contact me, and I can email you the letters. The project site is located at 223 Baltimore Avenue. It is within the Baltimore Park neighborhood and is accessed from Baltimore Avenue. The project site is adjacent to two existing single-family residences. To the north is 229 Baltimore Avenue, and to the west is 219 Baltimore Avenue. And 229 Baltimore Avenue sits at the same elevation as the project site, and 219 Baltimore Avenue is at a lower elevation. Located to the east and to the south are multifamily units. This is an aerial that shows the site and the surrounding properties. The existing residence is located in the northwestern portion of the site. It is located five feet, six inches from the western property boundary. And you can see the residence to the north. And then to the east and the south are the condominiums, and then to the west is the other single-family residence. The project site is developed with an existing two-story structure. The lower level consists of the garage and basement, and then the upper level is the living area. The size of the living area is just over 1,000 square feet, and the height of the existing structure is 21 feet, six inches. And again, this existing residence is located in the northwestern portion of the site. The project site slopes in a southerly direction. The majority of elevation change occurs in the approximate bottom third of the project site, and Marin Maps lists the average slope at 17%. The picture on the far left is taken from about the approximate center of the site, looking in a northerly direction. And you can see there are three trees in the northern portion of the site that the applicant proposes to remove. And I'll go into more details on those in a subsequent slide. The picture in the middle was taken up towards the top of the site, and it's facing towards the south, looking down towards the condominium units. The picture in the upper right-hand corner was taken from the approximate southeastern portion of the site, looking in the westerly direction. And you can see the existing two-story structure in this picture. And then in the bottom right is taken from Baltimore Avenue, and this is the view of the existing residence from the street. The project site is zoned R1, medium-density residential, and the proposed project meets the development standards of the zoning district, including setbacks, lot coverage, floor area, height, and parking. As you can see by this table, the size of the lot is more than double that of the minimum parcel size for this zoning district. This shows the site plan. The proposed residence is located in the eastern portion of the site. There's an existing curb cut on Baltimore Avenue that the applicant will continue to use to access the site, and they are proposing a permeable paved driveway to provide access to the garage. The garage is located 20 feet from the front property line. And then the eastern portion, the setbacks vary from six feet, and this is towards the northern portion of the site, close to Baltimore Avenue. And then in the rear portion of the eastern elevation, it is 19 feet. The proposed rear setback is 25 feet, and the proposed setback to the western property boundary is 37 feet. The applicant is also proposing a pool in the western portion of the site. The pool and the associated pool equipment is located 10 feet from the western property boundary. And also in this portion of the site is proposed seating area and a fire pit. The proposed project is 3,114 square feet, and it also includes an attached 665 square foot garage. The garage has been sized to allow for storage of the family's bicycles and other equipment while still allowing two cars to park. And the floor plan includes four bedrooms, four and a half bathrooms, a game room, a great room, a kitchen, a dining room, and an office. The proposed residence is a combination of ranch, craftsman, and modern farmhouse, with a gable-style roof that has a slope of 6 to 12. The proposed materials include hardy-smooth lap siding painted white, hardy-smooth trim around the windows and doors painted white, and gray composition shingle roof. The applicant proposes to install solar on the roof with a backup battery for electric use. The proposed residence is a single-story house that is built on a sloped lot. The applicant proposes to reduce the elevation of the northern portion of the lot, which will result in the front portion of the house sitting at a lower elevation. The applicant is using the topography of the land to create a crawl space and a storage area in the rear portion of the house. The height of the structure at its tallest peak is 28 feet, eight inches, and the portion of the house visible from Baltimore Street has a maximum height of 22 feet. This shows the north elevation, which faces Baltimore Avenue. The main entrance has a height just under 15 feet, and the garage, the height at the peak of the garage is just under 18 feet. And then the peak of the north elevation is just under 22 feet. So the south elevation, that faces the rear of the property, the height ranges from 18 feet, nine inches, to 28 feet, eight inches at the peak. And you can see this is the finished floor, and so the area below that is the crawl space area. So the west elevation, and the height of the west elevation ranges from 17 feet, 11 inches at the peak of the garage, to 28 feet, two inches. In the east elevation, the height ranges from 17 feet, 11 inches, again, at the garage, and in the rear portion of the lot, the maximum height is 28 feet, eight inches. And again, you can see the storage area and crawl space in that area. The proposed project proposes to remove three trees, which have a circumference greater than 50 inches at breast height, and this includes the Boonia Boonia tree, which is also commonly referred to as the monkey puzzle tree, that has a circumference of 151 inches. The Deodore cedar tree has a circumference of 88 inches, and the Canary Island date palm has a circumference of 116 inches. And the Boonia Boonia tree is located in the driveway, and the palm tree is located within the proposed footprint of the garage, and then the Deodore cedar is located just outside of the footprint of the garage. And as part of the project, the applicant submitted an arborist report. And in the review of the project, town consulted with the town's consulting arborists, who also completed an arborist report as well. And the two arborist reports both concluded that the trees should be removed to eliminate safety hazards and the invasive natures of the trees. And the Deodore cedar tree is also listed as a pyrophytic tree, which the fire department recommends removal of. The applicant is proposing to install drought-tolerant landscaping, and the majority of landscaping is proposed in the northern portion of the site, adjacent to Baltimore Avenue. The applicant proposes to plant seven new trees. They're proposing a 48-inch box pin oak, and then the other six trees all have a proposed size of 24-inch boxes, which include two western red buds, three olive trees, and a Myers lemon tree. As part of the project, the applicant conducted neighborhood outreach. They sent two pieces of outreach prior to submitting an application with the town. In June of 2019, they sent an introduction letter to the 25 neighbors. This included the condominium owners on Pixley and Redwood, and also neighbors on Baltimore Avenue within 300 feet. And subsequently, in September, the applicant sent a second letter, and as part of that, they provided a landscape plan and a rendering of the project. And more recently, the applicant went door-to-door to neighbors on Baltimore Avenue and introduced themselves and spoke with several individuals about the proposed project. As part of the project, as required, the applicant installed story poles. The story poles show the silhouette of the proposed residence. The picture on the left was taken from the condominiums on Pixley Avenue. The picture on the right was taken on the southern portion of the site at the condominiums that are to the south, and it's looking obviously in a northerly direction. The picture on the left was taken from Baltimore Avenue, and the picture on the right was taken from the approximate center of the site, looking in a northerly direction. And in order to approve the project, the Planning Commission must make required design review findings, which I have included for your review. And I would also like to add that staff met with a few residents of the Parkview Terrace condominiums at their homes today to discuss their concerns. And staff was not able to talk and meet with everyone due to the amount of comments that were received and the shortage of time in the day. But that concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Martha. So now, we are going to go into a process where we'll ask staff if they have any questions. I'll ask the Commissioners after that any questions for staff. And then the applicant will make a presentation, and then we'll go into public comment. So just laying that out for everybody here. Commissioners, Phyllis, do you have any questions for Martha?
Not at this time.
All right. Dr. Bundy.
Martha, I visited the site, and things really have been scraped down. Do we have any photographs of what the site was like before, trees and vegetation were taken out?
I do not have any. There were several eucalyptus trees that were removed from the rear southern property boundary. There were three large eucalyptus trees. And then there were a total of seven acacia trees that were removed. And those were mainly along the eastern property boundary, and then there were a few other acacias scattered throughout the site. And those did not require a tree permit, since they are listed as an undesirable species. But unfortunately, I do not have pictures of the site before that was completed.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Margaret, would you turn your microphone on? Is it on?
So I read the arborist reports on the trees that were going to be removed, and I understand one of them is a fire hazard.
Correct.
But what the arborist said was kind of contradictory, so I'm not quite understanding, because they said the trees were healthy and mature trees, but they should be removed. So were they saying they should be removed so that the building could proceed, or what was the reason? I didn't see a reason for healthy trees being removed.
So for the Boonia Boonia tree, it has some unsafe qualities to it. It drops very large cones that can be up to 15 pounds. And it also has an expansive root system that spreads pretty much the canopy of the tree, so about 40 feet. So it makes any development on the northern portion of the site very challenging, because you would essentially, if you damage the roots, then that could result in the tree dying. So that was the reasons behind that, kind of the location of the tree on the site, and then also the dangerous qualities of it. And then for the palm tree, it's not a native tree. It's an invasive tree, and it's actually highly invasive. And this tree has not been maintained in many years, so there was a concern was raised that the underbrush of palm trees can fall during storm events.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, who took the pictures?
So staff. So staff took some pictures, and then the applicant also took pictures and submitted them as part of the application. And the pictures from the applicant are included as an attachment to your report. This picture was provided by the applicant.
You good with that, Margaret?
I understand, yes.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
No.
All right. Mr. Lee.
So to follow up on the trees, just to be clear, if they're considered invasive, they can be removed? And would an arborist usually recommend removing invasive tree species these days? Is that just like...
So it depends. The Deodore cedar is a tree that's always recommended for removal since it's a pyrophytic, and it's on the list of trees, the fire-safe Marin. But then there are other instances where maybe a non-native tree would not be recommended to be removed. It's context-specific.
Do you know where the Boonia Boonia is from?
It is from, I believe it's from Australia.
All right, thanks. So the other thing is, this is a full rebuild. It's basically a new house, and they're going to tear down the old house, correct?
Correct.
So the solar, does that fall under the new house needs new solar requirement? So there's a mandatory measure that they'll have to do?
So my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, is the new building codes, which take effect January 1st, that residential does need to have solar.
Yeah, so it would be determined on when the building permit application is submitted to the town. So, yes, I think it will be.
Because, I mean, that's very clear when it's a greenfield site, but if it's an old foundation, and then you're moving it to a new foundation, building a new house on an existing, I wasn't sure if we understood what that was.
Yeah, the building code would determine this, by the building code, to be a new structure, a new house.
All right, thank you.
So with that said, the CalCert program will fully apply after...
I think in our case, it will be January 3rd, because the second reading of the building code, of adoption of the building code happens, I think, at December 3rd, town council meeting.
Okay. All right. Yes, Margaret?
One quick question.
Yes.
Does that add to the height of the roof, or is that not counted, if you put solar up there?
It shouldn't add to it, yeah. It's on the slope. Okay. That's it. All right. So, yes, Phyllis?
Is the swimming pool going to be solar-heated?
We can ask that of the applicant. I'm not sure it's clear yet. So who's going to make the presentation for the applicant?
Hello, and thank you for having us. My name is Brady Del Sol. I'm the property owner of 223 Baltimore. This is my wife, Katie, and we've got our three kids here with us. And we're also lucky enough to have several friends and neighbors here supporting us from the town of Corte Madera. If you wouldn't mind raising your hand to let the people know if you're here supporting the project, that'd be great. Appreciate that. Thank you. We've been living on Lakeside Drive in Corte Madera for the last 11 years. I actually grew up here. My mom grew up here. My grandmother grew up here, so I've got deep roots in the neighborhood, and I truly love this town. Back in May of 19, we were given the incredible opportunity to buy this property from a man that I knew. It's a property that I've been aware of since I was a kid, kind of a dream lot situation. It's a dream come true. We planned to build our forever house there, a single-story house that we can stay in forever. The lot is over 15,000 square feet, as Martha pointed out. So the first several architects that we talked to recommend splitting the lot into two lots and building two houses, an idea that we never considered and don't plan to. And then they also suggested that we had to build a two-story house to really capitalize on the views, both toward the water and toward the mountain, another idea that we didn't want to do, being too offensive to the neighbors, and wanting to grow old in the house, wanted to keep it on a single level. And as you heard in Martha's presentation, we're not trying to max out the lot coverage or the square footage of the property. We're actually building a, we consider a fairly reasonable-sized house for the lot itself. All the building that we're doing fits within the setbacks and height limitations. We're not asking for any sort of a variance of any kind. We're going to be using panelized construction to frame the house, which is a much faster, more efficient method of framing, a lot less waste. It goes up a lot quicker, so it would take several months to frame, can be done in a couple of weeks, kind of beneficial to us and to the neighbors in the area. We will be adding solar panels to the house, whether they make us or not. That's our choice. And we're going to be doing a backup battery as well, that'll prevent us from maybe needing a generator sometime in the future with the power outage. It'll be a quiet source of backup power. And from the beginning of this process, our goal has been to design and build a house that fits in with the neighborhood. We didn't want it to be too big, too large. We didn't want it to be too architecturally striking. We wanted it to feel like it was a house that had been here and been updated. And we're fairly confident that shows in our design choice. Anything else you want to add, Adam?
I think you did a great job.
So thank you all for considering our project.
Thank you.
So stay right there. I'm sure we have some questions for you. We'll start over here with Phyllis on the right, and her unspoken question is, is the pool solar?
We haven't worked out those details yet, but we're certainly leaning that direction as an option for us.
All right. Anything else, Phyllis?
Yes. I noticed, and the people who wrote the letters noticed, you're going to have air conditioning.
Yes.
Air conditioning is not something you see usually in Corte Madera. Could you explain to me and the rest of us why, and, you know...
Well, again, we've been living in Corte Madera for about 12 years now, and we did add air conditioning to our current house. At the time, we thought it was maybe four or five times a year situation.
Yeah.
But I think, I hate to use the term global warming, but temperatures are rising. There's more and more frequent times, frequent days and nights, where the temperatures are not comfortable in Corte Madera. So we use it sparingly, but we do use it to keep the inside of the house comfortable, really at nighttime for sleeping.
Is there some attic space where you can put the equipment? Because when I had my house in Kenfield, and it was a two-story house, but there were two heating systems, and the one upstairs was a combination, heating and air conditioning, and all of that was in my attic.
That's news to me. I'm not aware of that situation. I was always under the impression that an air conditioning condenser needed to be located outside. So we chose a location outside that we felt was furthest from neighbors, furthest from affecting other people.
Well, I'm going to interject and just say to her question that, number one, the noise ordinance has to apply to you like it does everybody else.
Sure.
So the noise of that unit has to conform. And it's going to be, correct me if I'm wrong here, is it 65 or 75 dB at the property line? Something like that.
65, I think.
Actually, as it applies to mechanical devices, and this is yet to be, this will be, again, up for adoption at the next council meeting, but it's actually a certain number of dB over ambient. So I think in the case of something continuously running for more than 10 minutes per hour, it would be about 25 dB over the ambient.
Okay. So that said...
It's something we would check. The manufacturer specs, what we've been doing is checking the manufacturer specs when they come in for building permits, to make sure what the dB rating are, or is, and if there's a need for any sound attenuation or whatnot.
I will just say, mind you, spec some equipment, there are some that are, they purr. They're barely noticeable.
That's certainly our goal.
And it does not need to be any point of contention with anybody. If you pick a quiet unit, you can stand 10 feet away, and you're not sure they're running.
That is our goal.
And that's what has to happen.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Phyllis, anything else?
That was all I had right now.
Dr. Bundy.
Continuing on the air conditioning theme, if it's on the eastern side of the house, is that in the setback? And I guess is that allowed?
No. The unit would sit about 18 feet from the eastern property line, and about 35 feet from our southern property line, so well inside of the buildable footprint, way outside of the setback zone.
Oh, okay. One other thought I had in looking at the property, is there any thought to undergrounding electrical utilities going to your house?
We're trying to do that, yes. We're working with PG&E right now and trying to work out those details.
Okay. Very good.
Our power lead currently comes from across the street, about three houses down, which is a bit awkward. So we really like to streamline that and simplify that for us and for the neighbors.
Okay. I thought it was the pole that was immediately across the street from you.
Our power does not come from that pole. The cable and phone line come from that pole, but the power comes from across the street, two houses down.
Understood.
Strangely enough. PG&E was alarmed when they saw it, too.
That's all.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Lee.
So in looking at the landscaping plan, you don't currently intend to create some kind of buffer between all the multifamily units, both on the side yard and the rear yard?
The entire east are border to the property line, the butts up to the Pixley unit, has mature vegetation, several mature trees, about eight feet of scotch prume, all on their property line, that we love because it provides us privacy as well as property line, that we love because it provides us privacy as well as them.
Right. But you don't, you're not going, you currently do not have in the plans to enhance that anymore?
No, we're really kind of sticklers on this safety setback situation, and because that vegetation comes right up to our property line, and we don't have the ability to maintain that, we want to keep our setback as clean as possible, strictly gravel for drainage and for fire safety.
Okay. Thank you.
And the other property line will have a fence, though?
The southern property line will have a wooden fence.
Okay.
Right. Margaret? Oh, is that all you have?
Yeah, that is.
Okay, Margaret?
So, as I read the letters of opposition, one of the points of contention is the loss of view that your neighbors may have. And there's one gable that reaches 28 feet.
Correct.
Had you thought at all, or talked to your architect about bringing that down at all?
The original design had a slightly steeper pitch that we felt blended more in with the modern farmhouse look and the other older homes that are on the Baltimore area neighborhood. We reduced that down to, simply reduce it down to make it less intrusive. And again, that number of 28.8 or 28 feet 8 inches is really at one point of the roof, measured from the lowest point of the property, and that only exists in one particular location. As soon as you start moving north on the property line, that number drops pretty rapidly. So it's not a whole ridge line that's 288, it's one particular point of one roof.
And have you visited your neighbors' homes to see what their view may or may not, how they may be impacted?
We've never been into the condos on Pixley or Redwood Avenue, but we have walked, the neighborhood extends, we walked up the driveway on the units at Pixley. We've been into the house, at our neighbor's house at 229 Baltimore, discussed with them how, ways to add privacy for them and for us, that's all in our landscape plan.
But you haven't been on that deck that's...
No, we haven't.
...is, is, okay, thank you.
Okay. I don't have anything particularly to ask you. I think that the plan shows retaining walls on the perimeter of the property to achieve the grading that you're after. So it's a six-foot retaining wall at the worst case.
Well, that retaining wall's been reduced down.
Three. To three feet is the maximum.
Right.
Of the retaining wall in the southwestern portion of the site.
And that retaining wall is really just to create a more usable yard. It's not really holding back the house or anything structural. It's just to create more of a flat space for the kids to play.
Right. It's shown right on the property line or close to it in the plot plan, I believe, so...
Yeah, we actually pointed that out and caught that in the later stages of the plan development. So we had a conversation last week about the fact that if those walls are actually in the setbacks, which they are, they're going to max out at three feet high. So it's going to have to step down as it goes down. So I know what you, the condition is not going to be a six-foot wall next to the property line that's at grade, which would create an awkward condition to adjacent properties.
It just said in that...
It does, and I think in, there was something in the staff report, and you want to highlight the condition?
Yeah, there was a discussion in the staff report, and then also a condition of approval was added that denotes the maximum height is three feet, and as part of the building plan checks, the middle staff would be verifying that that is the case.
Got it, okay. Great, thank you. All right. All right, unless you have something else you want to add, I think we'll turn it over to public comment.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the way we typically do this is we have this lovely red light that has a horrible sound when it reaches three minutes, at which time I'd ask anybody making a comment to stop talking. So we have a lot of people that want to say something tonight, and we're anxious and eager to hear, and it looks like we have a taker here right off the bat, so. We'll open this public comment section formally, and with everyone here, we want to keep the line fresh at the podium there so that we don't end up with a blank space in between. So it would be great to keep that set of folks wanting to comment behind the speaker.
Hi, thank you.
So, here we go.
I've discovered that three minutes goes very quickly, so you'll forgive me for speaking rapidly. So I just want to share with you a series of photos from...
Your name, please?
My name's Jeremiah Mock. I live at 101 Pixley Avenue. And I'm speaking on behalf of my landlady, who is Beverly Adiego. She lives in Idaho, and she's not able to be here. But the views that she's expressed in the letter that you have, and my views echo hers as well. So the first picture is a picture from the driveway, so you can see the actual height of the structure as it's proposed. It's between six and eight feet setback from the property line. If you turn to the next picture, you'll see, actually in the first one, 101, written on the front there, that's the unit that we're in. And if you turn, you'll see that's the view that we have of Mount Tam from that corner of the balcony right there. As you know, based on the ordinance, you're entitled to view based on the purchase date of the property and then 12 months thereafter. The owner, Mrs. Adiego, has owned this, her family has owned this property since 1962, and I can tell you that there were no cases or other structures there at that time. And we've enjoyed that view. It's been somewhat obscured and obstructed because of foliage, but it's always been there. The next picture is a dark picture, and that's, actually, will show you the fact that our back patio is quite shadowed for most of the time, but you'll notice that the red arrows above are all the posts. So I actually went to the front of the building, of the property, and I don't see any sign about who the architect is, and I don't know if the architect is actually here, and whether or not those story poles have actually been validated by height, or how, what the situation was on that. But I don't want to take my time to get the answers to that. Maybe staff can answer later. So, those poles are very high, and if you turn to the next, so we get very limited sun on that side, and as you know, the ordinance says really clearly that owners have a right to sunlight. And our back patio gets, at this time of the year, now starting from October until about March, only about an hour and a half or so, and you can see very clearly the sunlight is coming through, and you can see the lines of the orange webbing that's been placed up above. So it would entirely, so this structure is 105 feet, it's a third of a football field, running between six and eight feet right above the property line, at elevations that run roughly from our patio grade level up to the top of the peak of the roof to be between 40 and 50 feet. So you're talking about building a wall that just obstructs our view of the sun and available sunlight. The next picture is just showing you to prove that there's actually sun on the back of our building. So that's the limited sun that we get, and that's all the time that I have to tell you.
Thank you very much.
That's how fast three minutes goes. But I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Hi.
May I have three minutes, please?
Yes, you will.
Thank you. My name is Doug Levy, and I have lived at 36 Redwood Avenue since 2004. I'm here wearing my individual homeowner hat. You separately have a letter from me representing the 38 homeowners of the Parkview Recreation Association, of which I'm president right now. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this project with you, and also appreciate the Del Souls for being proactive with their outreach over the past several months. I think we all share the desire to be great neighbors, and I know that's going to happen. The proposed home is immediately behind mine, so it has a big impact on me. And there's a couple of concerns, several have already been raised, that I at least want us to think about before we get too far down the path, because I think they're all fixable, as long as we are all working together. My chief concern is the height of the structure overall. The peak, as Commissioner Bandell mentioned, is, I believe it was, anyway, that high peak is a big concern, because even though it's just that one little piece, judging from the story poles, I see that right outside my kitchen window, and my dining room view will be of that peak, which, you know, I expect to see a home there, but a couple feet lower, I will have view of the sky, which would be better. The, even though the home is setback from the property line pretty well, I also have some concerns with the height of the ceiling in the other rooms. You know, we all like high ceilings. I had a 10-foot ceiling in New York that was lovely, but in a lot of cases, eight feet's just fine, and it's that tip of the story poles that kind of made me look and say, oh, wow, that's going to be a, that's going to be in my face every day. I also do have some concerns about the fire pit. I have every reason to believe that this family would be great neighbors, but if they have guests or visitors, or if they sell the home and somebody else moves in, that's going to be right on top of me. So I want to make sure that either engineering or landscaping or something is done so that we're at least trying to restrict noise or other intrusions. As it is, I hear pretty much everything on the block, so, you know, that's going to be a significant impact. The HVAC, similar issue, even if it's setback, I'm probably going to hear it. You know, those are all solvable with engineering. The, you know, the main thing is just making sure that we're communicating, which I appreciate that we're doing. I think with good landscaping along the boundaries, and, you know, maybe even just shifting the building by a couple of feet would make a huge difference. I don't know what's involved with that, I'm not an architect or an engineer, but there's plenty of space to work with. So I appreciate this opportunity and look forward to having great new neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Hi.
My name is Carol Shawn, and I've lived at 219 Baltimore Avenue for 53 years, and I'm very close to the Dela Souls. Brady is a very good friend of my son's. But I am concerned, and I will list the concerns quickly. The height of the building, I think, is overkill. It's not necessary. I appreciate that they want to build something one-story, but the feeling is of a two-story building. It's 12 feet higher than the top of the ceiling in the great room. Also, I encouraged Brady to have a swimming pool, but not a huge swimming pool that is setback 10 feet from my property line. And I realize that he is working off of a new dimension. Evidently, some of his property is on my line, so I don't, I don't understand that. But where is he starting? Is he starting from the imaginary line of the property line, or the true property line that I've been living with for 53 years? I would, I think that the amount of pavement for entertaining is enormous. I give a lot of parties, sometimes with 100 people, and I don't need that much room. They could move the pool back a little, and I don't see any shrubbery along the side, and that is the western side of the property. This is a concern to me. I love children. I don't mind a little noise, but literally, it's on top of me. They even have a bench right on the property line for people to sit. They have a pool pump building that is quite close to my bedroom. I'm on the first floor, I'm sorry. I'm 81 years old, I just hurt my arm. Anyway, and I think that there's some, would be a good idea to put that pump in a place that isn't so close to me. I don't understand that. So, when I got the rendering of the, the very beautiful rendering, it looked like a normal one-story house. It did not, oh.
Thank you, Carol.
I'm Lisa Spangler, and I live at 75 Redwood Avenue. And at 34 Redwood Avenue, I grew up on that street. I've been here 60 years. I am neighbors with Carol, and it's really nice that, I suppose most of the people here are not our neighbors. You're in East Corder Madera? But, no? Where are you? You in Baltimore in our area?
Chapman Park.
Chapman Park, okay, so you really won't see this building. Well, you probably will, actually. But I'm just wondering, because so many people are here that aren't my neighbors, but, you know, my immediate neighbors.
It's not a dialogue with the audience.
Yeah. But anyway, what I want to say is, is that I walk the property line with my son, and he's an environmental scientist, biologist, soil expert. He's very concerned, because Doug and I are, we're below, you know, this property, and I'm, you know, when it rains and all, the drainage and all, so really, the structural integrity of that land that they're on is a big concern. And like Carol said, when I first got their letter, they introduced themselves, they said they were going to move into the neighborhood, they were going to build a house. Then when they did send the second one, it didn't look like it was such a setback, and it did look like a one-story building. The way the story poles are up, or the boards, it's so high, and I really feel for my neighbors that are in what we refer to as Building Nine on Pixley. From my kitchen and my dining room, too, I will just look at this building, too. So Doug is right, and I do support everything that my neighbors have said. This is a real concern. It's much more than we had ever anticipated based upon their letters, and I think there's a lot that needs to be looked at. I think it can be worked out. I think that they do have a lovely home. I just think the way it's sited on the property is in the wrong place. I know that, you know, outdoor entertainment is important, and Carol makes a very good point about noise. They have young children, they'll be entertaining, you know. I know there's noise ordinances, and I would hate to have to, you know, be disturbed or maybe have to call at 10:30, 11 o'clock, or something if a party was going on. And the fire pit does concern me, and I think it concerns a lot of people now because of the fires that are going on, and we're having to do a lot of cutting of our own trees. There, I asked if they had done a lighting survey, and they had not, and the lighting is really important to us. So thank you very much for taking my comments.
Thank you, Lisa.
When you say lighting survey, you mean shadow study?
No, shadow study.
Hi.
I'm Matt Shawn, Carol Shawn's son. Grew up at 219 Baltimore. Very close friends with both of the Del Souls, and I look forward to having them be my mother's neighbor. We're just probably want to echo some of the comments my mom made in the spirit of collaboration. I think Brady and Katie mentioned a lot with the neighbor to the side. I would have liked to have seen just a little more with my mother, especially since they've known her, and maybe we can just work out some better foliage along the property line and make sure, since it is sloping that way, as I know they will, that the drainage is all good, and I anticipate that that will be, that that drains that way. And so it'd just be nice if we could thicken it up. I do have, I didn't know whether to present pictures, and I think a hedge will grow, and I know Brady will want to work towards providing that, but sometimes it's nice just to see it in the plans. And then, just the pool pump, and I'm trying to understand if that falls under any ordinance, and I know that Brady and Katie will be mindful of whatever ordinance there is to ensure that, because it's so close to my mother's bedroom window, and maybe an enclosure to the pool pump or something of that nature. And then, we'd just love better updates on, like, there's just some unique nuances where the water meter's down, because it was, I think it was one lot at one time, and so the lot's been split in half by, you know, years and years ago, and you know how Corder Madera can be, shared sewer laterals and things of that nature. I just think it'd be mindful to make sure we understand how that's going to be addressed, if we know that water lines are going to be trenched or whatever that might impede on my mom. I know I do support this project, roof lines, I'll let that be others, it doesn't, but I would love to just see, and I think Brady would want... I would love to just see, and I think Brady would want that, it sounds like my mom throws some parties still, so, making some, making it quiet between both properties would probably be a good thing. I don't know if a fence makes sense, or doesn't make sense. I think that just some good hedges along that line would, would go a long way. I know he wants that, so, I think he wants that, yeah, I'm pretty confident he does. And I'm very excited that they got something that I know that Brady has, we, we both knew the previous owner, and so, I'm happy that he's gonna get that dream home, and hopefully continue collaboration with the neighbors to ensure that it is, works for all people in the area, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Who's next?
Hi there. My name is Tom Grams, and my wife and I own the property at 229 Baltimore, right next door. We've had the opportunity to meet Brady and Katie, and we're really looking forward to having you guys as our neighbors and your kids, so, and we do appreciate you coming over and sharing your plans with us. And the only reason I'm standing here is actually just to wanna be sure that, one of the things that we discussed is, in regard to hedges between our house and the property. So, our house was built in sixty-two, that, the side of our house looks directly into that property, and our, we have sliding glass doors on a bathroom that have, ever since the house was built, looked into woods, and now that's changing, so, we just want, for your sake and ours, we just wanna be sure there's a, a hedge there, and, especially during construction, and going forward. We, we yearn to maintain our privacy, of course, there. So, I guess that would be the one, one thing that we'd like to have assurances on, and then, of course, once the construction starts, we're, we're right adjacent to it, and just whatever can be done to ensure the abatement of any kind of dust, and dirt, and noise, just all the things that one would expect, I guess, in any construction project. But, again, thank you for sharing the plans with us.
Thank you. Hi.
Hello, my name is Brooks Hain, I live at eighty-one Lakeside Drive. I too have spent sixty years or so here in the community, and very, very grateful to be a part of this amazing county and area. I am the current neighbor, or one of two current neighbors of the Dela Souls. And the only comment I really have, 'cause I think there are a lot of thoughtful comments, and I really respect and appreciate the, and empathize with the concerns over things like privacy and setbacks, and air conditioners, and fire pits, and, you know, all these things are really important to share, and this is the forum, and I, you know, with that empathy, I also wanna say, as the Dela Soul's neighbor, that when they moved in eleven years ago, I, you know, probably couldn't have asked for a better neighbor in retrospect, very, very sad. It's our loss that they're building their dream home, but I'll just use the word "dream" and say they're dream neighbors. And, you know, my master, our master bedroom, if you wanna call it that, is about nine feet from their family room, you know, or maybe twelve, or whatever, it's, it's not very far. Their kitchen, our yard is very much adjacent to their current yard, with lots of fun being had, and hopefully balls flying over and back, you know, now and then, and we just couldn't, you know, we feel like we have so much privacy, even with our close proximity. A lot of privacy can be legislated, maybe to a degree, but more of it is actually the behavior of people. And I've never once felt any kind of intrusion from the Dela Souls, their parties, anything, which, they really don't have many, and when they do, it's just kind of an overflow of very pleasant life, you know, young kids, and, and adults, too. So, I, I just wanna kinda throw that out there as, as a really important flavor for all this, you, you know, there's a lot of definitions of privacy, and having people like the Dela Souls as neighbors is priceless, in terms of just, you know, the kind of respect and, and quality of life that it affords their neighbors. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Who's next? We got a lot of people to speak here.
Hi, Dan Reedy, I live at four-four-seven Manzanita, and lived there for twenty years, December.
Yay.
So, my daughter Caroline, pretty much when you turned about three, that's when we got to meet the Dela Soul, so about eight years ago or so, and have been the, the guests at their home quite frequently, and have gotten to know them because of, they're just kind people, but also their volunteerism in the community, and just their participation in the community has been outstanding. I think the three things that kinda stand out for me are just responsible neighbors, considerate, thoughtful type of people, and I think that the design reflects their thoughtfulness. They are going to be great neighbors to everyone in the neighborhood, and they are really, you know, upstanding members of this community. So, there you go.
All right, thank you, Dan.
Hi, my name is Megan Harvey, I'm at one-forty-nine Lakeside Drive, and these guys are kind of my neighbors, and same with their direct neighbors, saying they're wonderful neighbors, wonderful people. But what I wanted to mention, something that I'm going through right now, is there is a big construction project next to me, for, I've been there for ten years now. And change is uncomfortable, but this new, young family deserves to come in, build the house that they've done all, you guys probably know about it, all to the right specs and everything, and they are being so gracious about everything, and it's really, you know, as change is uncomfortable, that is the way things work, and the way this community evolves, and how we build community, and it's uncomfortable, but you have to change, you have to accept it and embrace it, and I just think it's really important for this community to keep moving forward, and, you know, that's it.
Okay, thank you. If there's a, please, if you see an opening behind the speaker, stand up behind them, please, to keep it going. Thank you.
I apologize for that. My name's Mac Madson, I'm probably the newest homeowner in this entire room. I am a Marine Corps veteran, I just spent my, everything I've saved up over the course of my life, and bought one-eleven Pixley, which is pretty much the condo that's on top, right there, within the last two months. I bought it under the notion that I was gonna have this beautiful view of Cordera Madera, and had this beautiful view of Mount Tam with my wife. The Dela Souls, you guys seem like awesome people. I don't think that that, you know, anything is gonna be a problem, I'm not worried about the fire pit, I'm not worried about noise ordinance, I'm not worried about that. The only thing that I care about is that beautiful view of Mount Tam, and for me to not have that, almost feels like I was kinda cheated out of what I just purchased, so, that was my major concern with everything.
Okay, thank you. We'll make an exception for you, but, it's not, it's not appropriate, I can't normally do that, but I'll give you a-
The Dela Souls do not need to have people tell how wonderful they are.
Okay.
I've known Brady since he was a kid, they are wonderful people.
This is a dialogue, then you can-
I am saying that the pitch of the roof is unnecessary. The gentleman over here is a very lovely man, and he lives on the other side. His house is a one-story house, and it looks and feels like a one-story house.
I get it, so, thank you. The point's been made, thank you. All right. Who else is gonna speak? Please, jump up, otherwise we're gonna close the public comment section. So, there's lots of people here, who else wants to speak? I'm not seeing any takers here. So, okay.
Hi, my name is Del Marte, I live on the Larkspur Line, but I frequent the same street, passing on my way to drive my kids to Neil Cummins, every day, and the current structure that's there looks, has this kind of hospital aesthetic, you know, to it, that when I saw the pictures up there today, I, I was just like, this is gonna totally help increase property values, it's gonna make the, just neighborhood more desirable, and it looks to me like, as a, you know, person in this area, I, I would be all for it. And, of course, you know, it's, I'm not gonna be directly impacted with views or anything, but just the aesthetic from the street, driving by, and the current structure that's there, that coming down, I just think it's an all-around win, you know, the beautiful new greenery that's placed there, so, that's all I wanted to say, as somebody that drives by it every day.
Okay, thank you for that. No one else making any comment? Okay. So, what'll happen, if I close this public comment section, we're gonna ask staff for a response, and then we'll discuss it amongst ourselves up here. So, unless somebody else is jumping up, all right, we're gonna close the public comment section. Thank you. So, Martha, you've had some things pointed out to you that you may want to comment on.
Yes. There was a question about the height of the story poles, and if they have been certified, they have, have been, by a surveyor, so the, the height of the story poles are accurate. There was also a question raised about a hedge between the project site and the property to the north at two-two-nine Baltimore Avenue. I forgot to mention in the presentation, but there is a pittosporin shrub that runs a large section of that northern property boundary, which is an, an upright shrub, that's an evergreen, that will create privacy between the property to the north and the project site. I think those were all the clarifying notes that I had written. Adam, do you have anything additional?
I think there was a, a comment made about whether or not the current fence line, and the distance from the ten feet, whether it's measured from the current fence line to the swimming pool, or from the property line. And it is measured from the property line. What is not entirely, may not be entirely clear, is exactly where that fence is in relation to that property line. I believe the survey does have some of that information, but it does appear that it varies, but it does appear that the existing fence is actually further into the Dela Soul's property than the actual property line, which is further to the west of that, so, but just to clarify that, where the ten-foot is measured from. And then, and then, I think, there was also, the first commenter talked about rights to sunlight and preservation. I'm not entirely clear what the code reference was to, but I, I, you know, we've heard this in, in respect to the view and sunlight preservation ordinance, which is chapter fifteen, and it's fifteen-fifty-oh-nine-oh-nine-oh, which really relates to policies of the town, when trees or vegetation on another's property grows into the view, or blocks sunlight onto sort of the complainant's property. So, I just wanna clarify that that is what I believe the commenter was referring to, I did see it in some of the comment letters as well, that referenced to chapter fifteen, which is in our tree ordinance. But it really lays out essentially a procedure in our ordinance for the parties to actually go through a mediation, arbitration ultimately, if necessary, and it's not really something that the town mandates, other than laying out a recommendation for the parties to go through. It's more than recommendation, it's the policy of the town that the parties go through that code process, if there is a dispute over vegetation from another person's property growing into your view. So, I just wanna make that clarification.
Okay, thank you. A couple of clarifications, I think that the survey map shows that they found benchmarks on the property that they assumed were valid, and they were able to turn the angles of the property description from those points that they found in the ground out there in stakes, so, that it's a assumed valid survey based on that. And so, the, the lengths of the property line seem to conform with the stakes that they found. So, that, that's a valid way of looking at what they, they actually used. Adam, would you speak to the veracity of requirements, and the extent of requirements for any structural information that we hear people talking about, for stability and so forth?
Sure, so that is oftentimes, and required, it's, I shouldn't say oftentimes, but soils, engineering, and, and geotechnical reports are often, and would be required, engineered drawings would be required at the time of submission for building permit. This also does get routed to, during the planning stages, through our Public Works Engineering Department, they look at things. This is frankly, nothing out of the, it's not, nothing unusual about this particular construction that raised any concerns that that should be advanced at this point in time in the process, but clearly, before any building permits would be approved, there would need to be proper engineering and evaluation of the soils, structural integrity. Drainage would be incredibly important here, to make sure that, and is required by the code, to ensure that they're capturing all the rainwater and all the runoff on the property, filtering it, and properly draining the property, so that it doesn't impact neighboring properties downhill from it.
And I noticed that the site plan does show the routing of utilities underground on it, so, that's something you require as part of the plan, but it's, it's in that set of documents that we have now, showing how the utilities come into the property. And then, would you speak to how any of the pool equipment would be also covered under the noise ordinance as well? Such that it, we just, we spoke about that earlier, but I don't think you'd say anything different than what you said before, but, just to reiterate that it would be dampened and-
Right, and then we actually have a specific zoning requirement for pool equipment, which frankly, we, we like to apply to other types of mechanical equipment, but for some reason, our zoning code also specifies that it has to be a minimum distance setback from the property, from the side property lines, for that purpose. There are also other requirements by zoning to ensure that it is, sort of blends into the surroundings, and it's not sort of standing out. But, from a noise perspective, it would, it would follow the same sort of requirements under the noise ordinance that the AC equipment would be subject to, which is the twenty-five decibels above ambient noise at the property line.
Right, okay. So, with that said, I'm gonna ask fellow commissioners if they have any questions for staff after that public comment section. So, Phyllis?
Ah, yes. Martha, so I don't have to open this and knock over half of what's in front of me. Is it the great room that has the twelve-foot ceiling?
Correct, the great room has a twelve-foot ceiling, and all the other rooms have a ten-foot ceiling.
Okay, so the master bedroom is not different than the other rooms, it's just the great room that's twelve?
Correct.
'Cause what I'm thinking of is if you lowered the height of the other rooms to nine, which is still gonna give you a higher ceiling than the normal eight-point-three, and lower the great room to ten, and you're still gonna have the differentiation between the great room ceiling and the others, but by lowering it, that two feet, it's gonna make a difference for the neighbors. So, it's part of a compromise, but it's something I think that should be looked at.
So, on, before staff answers, on page four, the height of the ceiling is affected by trusses that actually create it out of the same truss height that applies to the rest of the building. So, the other rooms have a ten-foot, and then the truss has a cutout in it, so it gets to twelve-foot. So, they didn't jump the ceiling up, or the trusses up, for that twelve-foot height, they take it out of the interior of the trusses.
Or maybe they should lower the trusses.
It's right there. Yeah.
Yeah, I, now I see that.
Okay.
But I'm saying it can be lowered.
Yeah, it would mean that everything else would come down, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanna be clear, it's not an increase in height for the twelve-foot over the rest of the building? Yeah.
Well, that's where it peaks.
Right.
I don't feel about lowering the peak.
Right. Okay. What else do you wanna ask staff about before we?
That was basically it. I thought the report was good, and we've gotten good information from both the applicant and people as well.
Okay. Dr. Bundy, any questions you have?
Yeah, I was, I think I understood the east property line with the chain link fence that's in there, and the vegetation that's on the other side of the property, which actually creates a good screed, and some degree of privacy there. On the south elevation, which overlooks the redwood properties, is that supposed to be a fence, or is that a chain link also?
So, so currently, along the southern property boundary, there's an existing chain link fence with the, which the applicant proposes to remove. And in a portion of that southern property boundary is where the three-foot retaining wall would be located, kind of in the corner, and then the rest of it, they're proposing a wood fence.
For, for the, the rest of the entire, going over to the other chain link fence?
Correct. So, the, yeah, so they're proposing to remove the entirety of the chain link fence from the southern property border, and then leave the chain link fence in the majority of the eastern and western property borders.
So, from the standpoint of privacy, this is, you said six-foot fence?
The wood fence is proposed to be six feet.
Okay. And the, the, one other thought in relationship to privacy and looking at things that I would wanna maybe have you consider is maybe a trampoline in that particular location with, you know, kids being able to bounce up, might create not so much privacy issues, but be somewhat intrusive of the neighbors below. And finally, in relationship to the gable peak at the south end of the building, could that be sloped without impacting any of the internal structures, so that it would be less visible from those below? Could that be incorporated into it, and still have a nice sort of farmhouse style?
We'll ask, maybe we'll ask the applicant some questions here that we get to shortly, but that's one of them for you. Anything else you wanna ask staff?
The, the other thought I had, the fireplace has been, fire pit has been brought up. That's a gas fire pit?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lee?
So, a few people have brought up the concept of shadow studies. Is there anything in our kind of requirements that would flag a mandatory shadow study, or any kind of objective criteria in which the shadow studies could be evaluated? That, that we have currently, or understand?
So, the shadow studies are generally required on a case-by-case basis, and if there's a, there's not a hard and fast rule on that. Sunlight can be evaluated, usually in a case like this, it would come up if somebody, during the process, would have made the point that there was a concern about shadow or decrease in sunlight on their property. It wasn't immediately obvious to staff when we were sort of looking at the, the properties, that that was going to be an issue. The, as far as evaluation of them, it's, it's also, there's no objective standard, such as a degree to which additional shadow cast on a particular portion of a property, per se, is, is sort of laid out in our code. It's, it's gonna be a subjective standard that the commission would have to come to an agreement on, whether that is a significant and adverse impact in terms of privacy, or, sorry, in terms of sunlight impacts.
Okay.
I mean, we, you know, just on that note, you know, obviously, we've done that in the past, and we've tried to provide guidance to the commission in the past on what things maybe the commission should consider in that evaluation, but we would do the same if that was something that was, the commission wanted staff to do.
Here's another question I have. So, the idea of privacy in a common area of a condominium complex comes up. So, you know, it's not just, it's just people being able to observe into other areas. So, the park, for example, is there privacy concerns if ultimately people can look into a park, or other kind of communal shared spaces? Like, the privacy, like, what is a privacy boundary? What are we really talking about, a privacy? Is it into a house, through a window? Is it onto a patio or a porch? Like, do we have any objective standards for that as well?
I can just tell you, I mean, this is something that the commission has evaluated on every project that we've seen, so there's a good sort of record of what has been considered those criteria for saying something is significant adverse. There's nothing in our code that will say what constitutes a privacy impact. You know, there's, there's, everything is a sort of a case-by-case thing, but oftentimes, we refer you back to past actions by this commission, and how they, whether they have seen certain conditions elevate itself to a significant adverse versus other things that just don't raise to that level, and are, on are seen as still approvable. So, obviously, any project is gonna have some change to the environment, some more than others, and so it's just.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Charles. Margaret, do you have any questions for the staff at this point?
Well, legally, in terms of liability, a pool that's open like that is called an attractive nuisance. And, and the poolhouse there with the equipment in it would also be, and it seems that the property is, is an open, basically an open space. It isn't walled off in any way. So, what, what is the town's liability in that case?
So, there are, there are requirements in the building code related to, to pools, that they need to be, there's different ways you can achieve the standards, but you can do it through covering it, or you can have alarms on exit doors. So, there are requirements that they would need to meet, as far as safety of the, of the pool, which would be evaluated during the building permits in the middle.
Building permit.
And there is also a wood fence that will separate the street, so you can't access from the street to the backyard.
Every pool in Corderman era has to have a fence around it, as it is now. And, they do. So, no one can enter it, just as a.
How high is the fence?
Six?
It's a five-foot fence, five or six?
No, I think it's six.
I don't know.
Yeah, right, off the top of my, but, you know, for instance, we have a six-foot fence around our, our pool, and it's, it's been, ever since the seventies when it, right? So, if three is not enough, so it has to be at least four, and maybe five, I'm sure of it. So, it, it has to be that.
I didn't see that in the plan.
Right. Okay, there's a, there are fences there on the plans, but they're hard to decipher. Anything else you wanna ask?
No, I think that's, that was it.
Okay. A couple of questions for you, Martha. These views have been brought up, and from the Pixley, 101 and 111. And secondly, firstly, upon that point, do you have any photos from over there yourself? And secondly, do you have the plans to put on the screen as well?
Which set of plans? Oh, the project plans?
Yeah, the architectural elevations and stuff?
Just what was seen in the PowerPoint. If there are additional plans not shown on the PowerPoint, I could make that happen. And then I do have some pictures that were taken, so.
Okay. The online staff report has the plans on them, on, on the, online. Yeah.
So, as I mentioned, I, I did go out to, and met with a couple individuals today, based on comments that we received. So, I met Jeremiah at 101 Pixley, and took some pictures from the balcony, the front balcony, and then also from the patio, and then also met, went to 36 Redwood as well. So, I do have those pictures. Okay, so these three pictures were all taken from the patio. So, this patio is on the front of the building, and facing Pixley. It's, it's, sorry, balcony. So, there are some, some different views taken from, from that balcony area. And then these were pictures that were taken from the lower patio area, which is on the lower level. And then these pictures were taken from 36 Redwood. So, the upper two pictures were taken from inside the residence, from the kitchen and the living room, and then the lower picture was taken outside of the residence.
Okay. Can you back up to the one from the balconies there? Okay. And in the left-hand photo, the area in the, the story poles to the very left in that photograph represent, not that one, but go down to your, right there. Which part of the building is that in the photograph?
So, that is.
Master bathroom.
Thank you.
Master bathroom, okay. All right. But the end gable of the larger roofline is the one to the very, the right there, that right there, yeah.
And that is the, the tallest peak at the 28.
Okay.
That's the master bedroom at the end there.
So, okay.
Yeah, so to go into a little bit more detail, where I was looking, obviously, I was standing on the, the balcony, looking towards the property, so looking towards the, the west, and kind of standing in the, the corner of the balcony, there is a, as you can see in the picture on the, the right, there's a table. So, this picture is standing kind of closer, and then this is standing back a couple more feet. And then this picture was looking more to, away from the house, more towards, I guess, further, further west on the, the lower picture.
Okay. Could you go back to that elevation of the building, please? That western, or east? There, that's, whoops, that's the one that we're talking about. So, when we were looking at the story poles, the one furthest to the left in that photo was that line right there, and then the one, that was the one that obscured Mount Tam a little bit on that property. And then to the right, was to the right of that pine tree and so forth. Okay. I mean, I'm sorry, sir.
So, unfortunately, I was not able to go to the balcony at 111 Pixley, so they only have pictures from 101 Pixley, and then from 36 Redwood.
So, would you please show me the, the, the Google shot of this property, please? So, in this house, to the, the north, the neighbors to the north, it looks to me that they have a pool right outside there.
They do have a pool, correct.
And it's a significant, it's probably 10 or 12 by 30-foot, 40, something like that, I don't know. Something like that. So, it's a, it's a good-sized pool, and it's probably right up against the property line over there, right?
It appears to be.
Okay. So, I didn't hear anybody talk about that, and there's also another pool to the northeast of the condo complex down there. And, and then there's, yeah, so, there's no shortage of pools and environment for pools in the area, that I can tell. So, yeah. Yeah, bud?
Just on, on this shot, the vegetation on the south of the property, those, that represents the eucalyptus that we're taking down.
This does show the, the eucalyptus trees. I believe there were three acacia trees removed from the eastern boundary, and then there were four smaller acacia trees from the kind of center of the property.
Right. Okay. So, would you put that building elevation back up, the one that faces the Pixley condos, please? Okay. We can leave it there. I'm going to start asking commissioners for commentary here, and I will address this one when we get to it. I won't throw my comments out there first, but I will get more serious about it. I will just say that I did some quick math of dropping the roof elevation to five and 12. It only gains a foot and a half in, of that height, and so forth, if we drop that, so, but, anyway. Phyllis?
Gaining the foot and a half, does it show any of Mount Tam from?
No.
So, makes no difference.
Right.
I'd like to make a comment on something in general about this process. It went on for quite a while. Nobody walks in with plans and just has them approved. You sent out letters in June and September, I think. You met with neighbors, I mean, you should've met with the people in Pixley, and not just on Baltimore, would've saved you a lot of grief at this point. But one of the things we have asked for, it's not a rule, but I think, Adam, that it's mentioned in the outline with any clarification, is to get written comments from the people, if possible, pro or con, and that, we would get that in our folders in advance. So, if, everything started late yesterday, which was the holiday, and today. I'm surprised staff even found the time to get out there and see some people. It's not fair to you, and it's not fair to all the neighbors, and I don't know why people, if they had a problem, didn't say something sooner. If you know a house is going up, you ask about heights and stuff like that. And I think, you know, a situation was created that didn't have to be created, and I, I feel bad for all of you who are affected by this, but we've gotta find a way to move forward. As far as this height goes, if it doesn't give a view of Mount Tam, what difference does it make, lowering it a foot and a half? I was trying to find a way that some of Mount Tam could be shown, and I'll go by your figures.
All right. We can talk about that some more later. So, on the sighting of the house and so forth, how do you feel about that?
Looking at the property, looking at the story poles, and I did not go to Pixley Avenue to see the story, but I only saw them from Baltimore. I don't see how it can be moved, or where it could be moved. I mean, it can't be moved further down. I think it, you know, the setbacks work, on the left and the right, and, you know, this is the design of the house. If this design is gonna be followed, this is where it's gonna be.
Okay. So, you're, you looked at the sighting, and you think that it's appropriate for the design on the lot?
Yeah, for this design.
Right. Okay. May come back to you later on.
I'm sure you will.
All right. Dr. Bundy?
Yeah, I think, given the size of the lot, and the desire to have a new house on it, it was inevitably gonna impact views of Mount Tam and sunlight to a certain extent. I would like to see that gable at the south. I would like to see that gable at the south end where the bathroom, master bathroom is, if that could be sloped down as opposed to a gable. I think that would decrease some of the impact, but not have any impact on you, on your interior space on that. But it would sort of reduce that sense of bulk that people see from below. And again, I sort of come back to this trampoline in that corner. Walking out to that corner and, you know, looking down, I realize there's going to be a six-foot fence there, but the trampoline is, you know, three feet off the ground and then has a cage around it that I think would have an impact on lots of people if you would consider sending them to a gym rather than the trampoline.
Excuse me, Bob, wasn't that an in-ground trampoline?
It's an above-ground trampoline, but we're more than happy to leave that to our current house.
Okay, all right.
I thought since it was drawn in the plan, it was an in-ground one.
Sure.
I just assumed that.
Yeah, Bob?
And then, I think the six-foot fence and the vegetation will really take care of the privacy issues. And the fence bordering the Shawn property, my recollection was is that there was a good deal of vegetation and screening that was already along there. But it would be, you know, good to fill in any gaps or anything like that. But I thought, you know, that house was sort of nicely vegetated around it, so. It's, yeah, it's unfortunate. People have had the advantage of having an undeveloped property there for many, many years and have gotten used to the views, although I'm still trying to get my head around what all these views were like once you took the eucalyptus down and then, you know, cleared some of the acacia, you know, on the, on the property. So I am comfortable with the sighting if that gable could be removed, or not, or not...
Altered in some way?
Altered, yeah, just have a, have a slope on the end coming down from below the peak of the gray room.
Well, we'll talk about that in a bit, but I think that that would impact the architecture in general, but maybe we'll see what we can think of. So, Mr. Lee?
So, one observation I made when I saw the overall site, when I saw the overall site plan in relationship to other lots, the only other lots that are of comparable size are the multi-unit family housing. And that, you know, you see how substantial building you can build on those kind of lots. So really, this single-family home is modest compared to other allowable uses in the area. And, you know, I also know that there are smaller homes in the area, but there's also a push, and it's not even in our own, like, town borders, but right adjacent to that, many of the homes are being upgraded in that area also. So I think it's compatible with the overall nature of that area, even if it's not within our municipality. So, you know, I would like to see not the site plan, but the interior floor plan, because, you know, I think this is such a validated plan already that if we are going to think about changing slopes or massings or anything like that, it really affects the overall functioning that this family has put quite a lot of thought into. So, you know, if we ask them to basically push that back so that we can preserve views of Mount Tam, like, is that even possible? You know, is that, does it dismantle the entire continuity of the living plan that they want at this late juncture, to the point that it can't proceed? And I feel like this project's good for the community and should proceed in some form, right? So, you know, I just wanted to take a little bit more time to understand why that little barnacle kind of comes out from the, from the overall massing, which usually we want it to stick out and have some breaks, so that doesn't read as a monotonous box like the one that's there now, right? So, you know, and then the other thing that I'd like to talk about is what is our definition of primary view? You know, so we've gotten back into this. We've definitely considered multiple times, from the outside, from patios, the same condition. And usually I find that it's determined that it isn't a primary view if you have to go walk to the very corner and lean over the side of a railing, unfortunately, to say that that's a primary view. I don't discount its value. It's just hard from a land use standpoint to justify the defense of stopping an entire project based on that, especially this late, because I think that I've seen in a lot of conditions, you know, had it been brought up sooner, that there would be, you know, concessions, because we all are neighbors. And like, it was mentioned before, it's just unfortunate situation. So, so that's, those are my opinions, okay? So, the other one is just the shadow studies. Ultimately, this is imposing over the Pixley area, and it does have quite a lot of kind of presence. And we've dealt with that also on some of the other sighted projects over on the other side of town. But also, if you look at Chapman Park, a lot of those houses up on the ridges end up having those, especially with peaked roofs, have this kind of imposing look over the valley, right? So I don't even think it's uncommon in different parts of the town. I think at that hillside, you don't see that that often. There hasn't, a lot of the ones that look over Madera Gardens aren't so pronounced in this kind of view-specific kind of directional sighting that we see on this one. So I think it's a little bit different than the majority of the neighborhood and condition over there. And so I can understand why the Pixley residents are overwhelmed by it a little bit, but those buildings, the condos themselves, those buildings have that same effect. And it is a character that they all experience on a daily. It's just this is going to be one more, a new type of that experience. And then, you know, I definitely hear about, you know, the ideas of adjacency, but condos, you live on top of each other and next to each other, like, right next to each other. So then to say that the single-family house that truly is separated is ultimately encroaching on them, it's harder for me to process whether that's a rational, like, you know, discussion, or whether that's really kind of a reactionary comment on something that is not understood yet. So that's how I'm looking at it, and I'm a little conflicted. I don't know that, I, given the amount of feedback that came from it, I think maybe going back and trying to understand what all the neighbors' concerns are and trying to remedy them might help the project better and relieve some, because I think they are solvable. But, you know, going back and understanding what that design is, I, I'm a little pressed to understand how to do it correctly, so.
Okay, all right. Farrah?
I think it's a beautiful home and a beautiful project, but I am extremely concerned about the lack of outreach that's happened with the, this neighbor, the neighbors at Pixley. I think it's, it's really a shame, and I think it's a real detriment to the project that the neighbors didn't exchange views, so to speak. And I think most of the time, that's what we do, and I think it's too bad even staff or the commission hasn't had a chance to see it. But as it is now, people are losing their entire view of Mount Tam. It's not a little piece of it, it's their entire view. And to me, that's not acceptable. That's my opinion. I think there are some other questions that have to be answered, which are not as big or important as someone losing their view.
Like?
Like, well, I think that there needs to be, there need to be things added to the landscape design, especially hedges around the edges, around the edges. I still think there's a question about the air conditioning unit and the pool pump building, and I have issues about that also. And then a property line issue was mentioned, and I wasn't quite sure about what's going on, what that issue was, but I think that needs to be straightened out also before building could take place.
Okay. Well, I'm going to jump in and I'll let staff do it, but for a couple of points, I just want to say that the air conditioning and the pool equipment, right, we have a noise ordinance, and two, the specs of the equipment can make it entirely acceptable in the environment.
Good.
That's, that can be remedied, whether it's this house or any other property in the town. It still has to have that viability. It has to conform to noise ordinance and so forth. The property line is simply on the plans, it's in there, and it shows where it's calculated from. And it says, here are the stakes where they measured it. So you can see on that sighting plan exactly where everything is.
It sounds, though, that one neighbor felt that either it was not in the accepted place where they thought it should be, or the fence was in the wrong place.
And that may be with most lines in town. If you don't have it surveyed, you come to find out when it's surveyed where it really is. And that's a, what you think it is is not what it is, and you may not want to acknowledge where it is, but you have to accept where it is.
But now would be the time to...
And that's what the plan shows. It shows where it is. It's there.
But Peter, you should mention...
Is the, is the, is it screened, this air conditioning unit? Is it, is it just...
No, it's in plan, it's right outside their master bath. So they're not going to put up with any noise, because it's right outside their master bath.
No, just aesthetically, though, I mean, if it's...
It's down below, great, it'll be covered by...
Yeah, so the AC unit is kind of located in this portion of the property. It's about eighteen feet to that eastern property boundary.
Right, so can you go to the elevation, then, the side one that we've been looking at? So it'll, it'll be down in that corner, down by the door, right?
Correct.
And, and will the Pixley resident, like, can they actually see up and over the crest of the hill to actually see any of that kind of equipment? So, that's, or from the south, so I'm just...
Right.
You know, it, sometimes people object or fear things, and it's not represented, right? So it, noise might be the first thing that they feel like they can go to, but also aesthetically, who wants to look at a big air conditioning unit right outside their window, right? So I'm just making, validating that.
Yeah, all right. So, Phyllis?
I was just going to respond to Margaret. The property line, it is not the applicant who is encroaching on the neighbor's property. The neighbor for fifty-somewhat years, I forget how much, much time section, has been using a strip of property that's actually over their line. And if they're happy with it, and both sides are happy with it, I think we ought to stay out of it.
Yeah.
I do see over there a sample board that didn't get passed amongst us.
Thank you.
So, I think that I want to comment on a few things. When I look at the tree removal plan and I look at the trees up there, there's no way a house ought to be built on that property with those trees that are there. That Bunya Bunya tree overwhelms the site. It's kind of, it's nuts. And it's a beautiful, amazing tree. Maybe it could be the Christmas tree in Rockefeller Center, who knows? But it's just unbelievable. And it's too bad, but it's, it's so old. Anyway, that was my thought about the trees and so forth, when I looked at them, and the palm trees are becoming passe, the date palms. I like them, but, yeah. You look at, you look at that tree from the other parts of Corder Madera, and there are palm trees down in Washington, Tonia. Fliffer is down in Pixley Park. Anyway, so I would ask that, in this construction plan that they create, and that we condition it such that the neighbors to the north get their fence built before the project gets underway, that would be the first thing. Define the parameters of it and build those little walls and the fences first, so that privacy is guaranteed. And you could plant the hedges out there in that time as well. And construction can be done to not chew up every square foot of site, and you've got plenty of site to work with, so, you know, you could keep those alive, I think, and protect your neighbors to the north and give them every due consideration. I think that, the, you've got great kids here, they're falling asleep, but, you know, we have, I don't know how many pools on our street, there's like five or six pools, and we have a pool. I never hear the kids out there, you know, but it's, it's just, you've, families have to be families, and I think they have a right to have a pool and so forth and so forth. I think that this house is big, and I would ask, and I'm looking right at you here, to say, you know, do you see any benefit to, would you go to that elevation again, Martha? Dropping this, I looked at the five and twelve, and it doesn't do much, but it might be an agreement to give something, concession to your neighbors on this if you dropped it a foot and a half off the top of that, and create a little bit more space for it. Would you consider that?
Changing the roof pitch from five twelve to a...
Five twelve?
Five twelve.
Yeah. Okay.
It also would be less imposing, Peter.
Yeah. So, and you can engineer it out for whatever you want, but that would do something to help it out. These windows that are on that side, so the far left is the master bath, the next four-square window is a office, and then the other three are bedrooms, pretty much, or?
Office, dining room, and then two bedrooms.
Okay. So, they look straight out, and if you were looking straight out, you won't even, if you had to look down, you'd walk straight up to the window, I think, to look down at Pixley. So I'm talking about privacy here. So you're going to have a six-foot fence, and I don't think the angle of it would allow you to look down at your neighbors, so forth. We don't have a site section that shows the whole hillside and so forth, but I'm trying to say that I don't know that you could, you would worry about.
I think that's a chain link fence with all the vegetation on the other side.
Yeah, a site section and showing the drop of the hill down to Pixley and so forth, that you would be looking into anybody's property. I don't think that...
Let's, I think you're getting close to reopening, if you want to...
Okay, all right, so thank you, right.
Wait, you could ask staff to show it.
Don't we have the picture with your letter, your email?
Yeah, the pictures were included with the email as well.
Okay.
All the pictures that were received via email were included, and there was a comment from the resident of one-eleven Pixley. Staff was not able to make it to that site, but there were pictures that were taken by the homeowner, and they are attached to the comment letter.
Yeah. Okay.
So the, the letter from one-one-one Pixley, it's about in the middle of the packet, and it's from Andora and Mac Madsen. And then there were two pictures that were taken, I presume, from their balcony, which is, it's a second-level balcony in this case. I did not take the pictures, so I cannot speak to where they were taken, but it looks like it was, the first one, they're kind of at the edge, looking westerly towards Tam. And then these are pictures, what's on the screen, that were provided by the applicant. So this is the elevation of Pixley, that's looking up towards the project site. So you can see this is the balcony where some of the pictures were taken from one-one-oh-one. And then I presume this is the balcony where the additional pictures were taken from one-eleven Pixley.
Okay.
And then this, this just shows the... And then this, this just shows the, the existing hedge that's located in between the western property boundary. So this property over here is the patio of two nineteen. And then this is the, the project site. So there's a, an existing chain link fence and then a hedge that runs the length of that property boundary. And then again, there's another picture of the, the elevation that's facing. And then this shows the, the sun. And I believe the picture was taken around three thirty this afternoon.
I see. Okay. So, tell me, tell us about that picture. It was taken from where? Martha, that was from the site, standing in the middle of the house? Or where is that roughly? In the middle of the great room or something, looking toward Tam?
So I did not take this picture.
Yeah.
And I did not know that answer. I don't want to misstate.
Okay.
But it looks like it's probably somewhere towards the approximate middle of the, the residence.
Right, okay. All right. So, I don't have anything else to impart to this. I would come back to you, Phyllis, and ask you for your review of the necessary findings. Or how you find it. Or do you feel we can make a decision tonight? Or do you want to defer it?
The re, the only reason I would want to defer it is I would like to see the applicant and the neighbors have a chance to interact with each other. I think it would be to everyone's benefit. Because you are going to be future neighbors. And I don't know how the applicant feels about it. And, but I think it would be helpful for everybody if they could talk about it. You know, they may come back, you know, to the next meeting with no change. But at least there's been a chance for each side to explain their feelings and why and where, et cetera.
Uh huh, okay. But other than that, you're feeling like?
As I say, as far as the findings go, it, it meets the objectives that are shown in the findings.
Okay.
You know, you know how I feel about findings, so it's the best.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Bundy.
I think your idea about reducing the pitch a little bit would be helpful. And if the Del Sol's were willing to do, you know, slope roof on the master bathroom, that would create less of a sense of bulk from people below. That would free up a little more sunlight. I think you've done a, a better-than-average job of trying to do outreach. But as we've seen, sometimes when story polls go up, you know, it creates some concerns that weren't there before. So I, I would be able to make the findings, given the changes that you, you've mentioned and I mentioned.
All right.
Bob, I, I want to mention, the story polls have been up for two weeks. They weren't put up this past weekend. And I just really wish all of you had talked to each other during that two weeks and didn't wait until yesterday to object.
Okay. Mr. Lee, how do you feel about the findings?
You know, I, I think in general, I could make the findings, most of them. But I don't feel comfortable at this point doing that without understanding some of the more recent issues that have been brought up by the neighbors. I, I just, you know, I thought I'd laid out a pretty rational understanding of, of the issues. And I, I felt like there was a lot of people that were angry about hearing what I had to say. And that means that it's a failure of communication beyond the DIES. And so therefore, yes, in engaging with your neighbors and understanding what the impacts are before we're forced to make a, a decision is in your best interest as a neighbor. And it's in our best interest on the DIES and doing what's best for the community. As part of that, I think, you know, in this condominium complex, they have a shared space. But then they have very limited spaces. They're much smaller units than single-family homes. Their patios are all they have. And, you know, the, the small views and amenities that they do have, I think, are more valuable to those residents than you would find in other conditions. So I hope that you respect that. And, you know, consider other ways that kind of reduce that monumental kind of ending, incap of your house, if you can. Or ultimately, if you can make the neighbors understand what those, like, you know, be comfortable with those impacts. However, losing the height or whatever. We don't try to design from the DIES. We really want the residents to figure it out. But until I don't feel so much animosity up here towards myself and my decision-making process is really hard for me at this time to approve it, as is, so.
Okay, thank you. Margaret.
I pretty much agree with everything that's been said. I don't think I could make the finding because of the view loss. I think that there's a lot more understanding that needs to go on as to what changes could be made or what considerations neighbors might have to what's being built. And I think I really suggest strongly that everybody view, you try to get into the townhomes, be invited by maybe one of, two of the homeowners.
Well, so I would include staff. Because ultimately, even though residents take pictures and send them in previous, you know, years of doing this, we get into these view discussions. And without having the staff have certain criteria for the photographs and the photographs being impartial, it's harder for us to evaluate. So once we set a precedent of the staff going in and setting view corridors, and, and then we can dissect what the impacts are and whether the DIES is comfortable with it.
We'll, we'll make that clear that the staff has to be there. But I just wanted to hear Margaret say what she has to say.
Well, and maybe the, I don't know if you still hear, the president of the homeowners association could be a facilitator of visits into the homes for the staff or other residents around, and vice versa. And I think that that would go a long way towards everybody appreciating everybody else's view.
Okay.
But I do, I, I, one more thing. I do appreciate what Charles said, and it really struck home that people who live in a townhouse have a smaller space and it's a more precious space because it's what they've got and it's smaller. And I think that they have the same enjoyment of that beautiful view as anybody else and maybe even more.
Right, okay. So, Mr. Wolf and Martha, here we are. And the applicant is probably sitting there thinking, oh my gosh, what have we got on our hands now? I think that what we're coming to, and I would join into it, is to ask the applicant to create this opportunity for a meeting with Martha and perhaps whoever else you designate to sit down and at least face-to-face talk about this stuff. You may walk away and they may walk away saying, it's exactly what we want, or we're going to leave it there. And that's what it is. But I think we all feel that this opportunity has to occur where you do talk to each other about it and you hear what they have to say. And, and we have to create that possibility, which would mean then that we have a continued hearing to either a date certain or a date uncertain. So it's about everybody's availability over the next few weeks to do this. Yes, Bob?
I would like to try to see if we could get this passed this evening with the stipulations that you had asked for and I had asked for. I, I listened to all the concerns and comments, read the letters. And I think everybody recognizes that, you know, a house is going to get built up there. I think from the standpoint of what anybody would build up there, there are going to be some losses of views of Mount Tam. And again, these are primarily from the patio or the, the deck, which is not actually facing in the direction of the, of Mount Tam. But the view of Mount Tam is from the, you know, the corner of the deck out there. And so I would propose to, to put this out there with the stipulation about the pitch and then the slope over the master bathroom.
Peter?
Yes, Phyllis.
I couldn't support that. And I'd rather, don't, I don't want to see you make a motion that we vote down. I'd rather that we have some.
You've done it before.
Oh, oh, I vote no and I want to vote no. But I am saying, I think you will find you're making a motion that's going to be voted down. And if the consensus seems to be that people, you know, want to wait. And so I'm saying, don't listen to making a motion.
Right.
I don't even know if you can get a second unless Peter's saying.
I, I have found that when we ask them to go back on a few of these occasions in the past, it's been quite successful and resolves almost all the issues instead of putting on us to, to solve it immediately. And I respect that the applicant would love to just be able to proceed with a very long process and not see a continuation of it for many different reasons. But I think in this instance, there are three people on the DIES that believe at this time, maybe four. I appreciate you trying to because sometimes we can push it through. But I also could not support it at this time, just that concession without really understanding what that impact would be. I think it's too large of a redesign to really be able to approve it without seeing it.
So I want to, I was starting to say this about where you, where we stand and what you're hearing about what would be the next step. So, on the other side of the coin, what I want to be really clear about is that a redesign is a challenge here to satisfy the extent of the request for removal of the blockage. You can't do it entirely and you guys have to hear that. You have to know that. You're going to lose some stuff. So, that building, a building on this lot is going to block view and sunlight to some degree. It's going to happen. And it's, it's, it's very real. So if it were a primary view out your living room window, we would have to say, this can't happen like that. But it's not. You've got to walk to the corner of the deck and look up. But that's important to them. So you guys got to hear that. And what I'm saying is that if you meet together and you all decide that what you've got is right or you can make some other alterations to it, come back to staff with a clear decision about what you and the neighbors have come up with. And we'll, they'll take it on and bring it back to us, whatever that is. But the opportunity will have occurred for everybody to sit and talk. And it hasn't. So I don't know how to make that happen from this position. These guys will make that happen. So with that said, Adam, you've got to.
Yeah, we will make that happen. But I do want to, I think it would be appropriate to sort of see if we can't set a date where it's a date certain to come back. So it doesn't end up being sort of a scheduling issue amongst the different parties. And we've seen that happen as well. So, you know, obviously, our next scheduled meeting, which we were going to talk about at the end of this meeting, is, is the Tuesday of Thanksgiving week, which at least my recommendation would be not to have it done at those, at that time. But I know that's, causes additional delay. But I would put out the date of December tenth, which is our next meeting in December. I'm looking now to the applicant if, how they feel about that. But I would ask the chairman to, to actually request that and ask that of the applicant.
So amongst the other commissioners, let me just ask first off if everybody's here that week of Thanksgiving. Yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Bob, be here.
All right. So then to staff, this is about these guys having the time between now and then to do that and everybody in the room being able to do that. It's not like this is going out for a fresh set of eyes and ears to bring people in that are going to be gone that week. So if they have that meeting, it's up to you guys if you want to do it that.
It's the Tuesday of the Thanksgiving week, so it's two weeks from today.
Two weeks from today.
Twenty-six.
Or four weeks from today. Okay.
Ah, I forgot to get that one.
December tenth, so.
Right, date certain, okay.
Well, so I, I think it would be good to, to make a motion to.
Right. So that's what we need from a commissioner here to bring that forth with this application number to continue this to a date certain.
I will move that the application of the Del Sol family be continued until December tenth. That's keeping it clean.
We have.
Need all the info?
Couple of things that I don't, we would say to the Del Sol family that, one, it's about height reduction and/or screening. So those are the two elements that you would walk away with from our position up here. That you would take to your neighbors and ask them. As I say, you may come back and say, we're good with what we got. All right, then let us know. But either way, you will have had that opportunity. So, a second on that motion?
A second.
Okay.
Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Bendel?
Yes.
Vice Chair Metcalf?
Aye.
Chairman Chase?
Yes, all right. Thank you all for this and marathon. So, but I thank you guys for bearing through this. And the ultimate goal is a better end product. So, good, all right. Thank you. We'll take a little break while we clear out the room. Take it away, Adam.
All right, I got a few other ones I want to say here now. All right, I'll try to make it.
Oh, okay.
What do we, nine?
Nine thirty.
So, I really just wanted to give the commission a overview of sort of this project we're embarking upon in Corder Madera and actually in ten other jurisdictions in Marin County. And as you'll see, this is one of just, I think it's important for the commission to understand that this is a project that the town is undertaking. Ultimately, this will be something that will be coming before the commission related to housing development in town. And there's sort of, you'll see how it starts to connect altogether with all the different things that are happening in the state. So really what I'm talking about, would like to do tonight is just give you an introduction to this project, which we're calling Objective Design and Development Standards. And actually, it's a, it's a really good, I, I think this commission was directly engaged in this very thing when we were talking about the accessory dwelling units at our, was that their last meeting? It feels like a very long time ago, but it was our last meeting. When we were talking about that distinction between what is subjective and what is sort of mushy and what is really a hard and fast standard that is either a project meets it or doesn't meet it. And allowing staff to make that determination in an easy, sort of, direct way and something that pretty much not only staff can understand, but everybody can understand going into a project. I'm going to try to find a way to move these slides forward. So really, why are we doing this? And this is sort of the same present, Phyllis is seeing this. But it's the same presentation I gave, I'll mention, to a, a group of advisory individuals. But one thing to note, the context in which we are actually working now is much different because of state laws that have been passed recently regarding, well, essentially impacting local jurisdictions' abilities to actually have the conversations like we just had with respect to design review or any other discretionary approval process. So we've talked a little bit about SB thirty-five, that was passed in two thousand seventeen. That only applies in certain circumstances. But basically, the state is saying, if you are not keeping up with your RENA numbers, your regional housing needs allocation from the state, on a prorated basis, on a yearly basis, the state, on a prorated basis, on a yearly basis, you will then be subject to state laws and a developer could invoke those state laws to basically apply for a multifamily housing project that as long as it meets your density requirements, in the right zoning district, height, et cetera, it's bypasses discretionary approval process. It bypasses design review, it bypasses SEQA, it bypasses a lot of your local discretionary approval processes. SB 330 is another one that was just now approved and will go into effect this year. Very similar, as long as a housing project meets your, you know, your general plan, density requirements and other objective design and development standards. It also cannot be disapproved or reduced in density.
Can we turn the air conditioning off?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Now that the heat has left the room-
Do we need a motion? I don't know.
Now that's a motion you can make and I'll second.
And there's numerous other laws that I think we can, that were sort of proposed last year, didn't make it this last year, but will likely be resurfacing. And all of these are moving towards more of a by right housing model, which another and otherwise means if it meets what the code says in terms of all these height, density, so on, then it goes straight to getting a building permit. And so this is really a way of, while sort of acknowledging that, that's the reality that we're sort of living in, also trying to sort of update our current design standards with ones that accomplish and actually reflect some of the things that we value as a community and some of the character traits that we want to see in our multifamily housing stock as it's developed in the future. So, it's, it's, one is I think that's very important. It's just, it's a response to some of the state laws that we're seeing. Two, and, and this speaks to, I think, Commissioner Metcalf's long, you know, and also Peter's desire and involvement, and at least with this commission, to, to start to see some, we've been, we talked about them in terms of design guidelines, but it's essentially in that same mold of, of creating more developed statements about what our multifamily housing stock or generally our housing stock, and this can be anything from a duplex to really, you know, a Tamarage residences. What those really look like and, and what the design of those should be in terms of what makes a project look, look good and what features should it have. So, good design. Three, this will all lead into, on the horizon, our next housing element discussion, which the state has also taken a very proactive role in, in sort of making sure that the sites that are chosen are real in terms of their ability to get developed. And I think we're going to see much more by right housing requirements as part of the housing element as well. But I also think it's a way that we can use these tools, once they're developed, these objective, sort of enhanced design standards and enhanced development standards, to have a better conversation about where our future housing sites should be located and what they will look like. And we can actually control that conversation, I think, better than we have in the past if we have these tools in place to talk about housing and talk about design, rather than it being sort of coming from a developer saying, hey, what do you think about this? What is, what should this look like? And then the fourth one is really, we're embarking upon this now with, as I mentioned, 10 other Marin County jurisdictions. It's, it's quite ambitious, but I think also somewhat innovative way of actually tackling this issue. There are very many, as we know, differences amongst our communities. We all are, have our own unique personalities, but at the same time, there is some economies of scale here in looking and learning from, I think, other communities and how they, how standards and objective design standards and for multi, for housing, what works elsewhere, what, what looks good from other jurisdictions, what can we bring into our community and what hasn't worked. And those sorts of lessons learned, I think, work is a good thing. And it's also just a good thing, I think, to be collaborating with our other communities in this way on this, on this project. So, that's another goal. So that was, I'm not going very quickly here, I'll, I'll try to speed it up. So just what's been done. So to this point, the town council has authorized us to apply for funds to basically embark upon this project. And that comes from the state. So these are called SB 2 planning, planning grants. So we're about to apply for those. So the council is aware of this project. We've, through the Planning Directors Housing Working Group, that's something that at the countywide level, we all get together once a month, we've developed and formed this group specifically on housing. This Objective Design and Development Standards Project has been led by County Marin Staff, which, and, and we've been part of the RFP process and selection process, and we ultimately selected Opticoast Design, Lisa Wise Consulting, who's more on the implementation side of things, and Plan2Place, who, that's a company that is run by Dave Javid, who actually you, some of you may remember from the Tamil Vista Corridor Project, who I hired to help us through that process. So he's, he's a local resident or grew up here, but he's also, as you know, is very good in that process and will be helping us through this in terms of also collectively trying to message this amongst all the jurisdictions. It's quite a, I think it's going to be quite a challenge for them, but also one that they're very excited about working on. And really what the product here is, is what we're calling a toolkit, which includes an architectural stylebook. This is just an example that they gave us of some of the stuff they've done in Novato, sort of form-based code type work that will basically just set through diagrams and other visual information, new requirements for multifamily housing. And they're also going to be involved with potentially having some help in implementing whatever comes out of that in terms of just making sure that it can conform to our zoning code and maybe some recommendations for where that's best suited. The third thing we've done to this point is create a technical advisory working group for the town of Corder Madera to make sure that we are developing this in line with our community's focus. So this, this, and I should make it very clear, we were very clear that each community in each jurisdiction has to have its own set of development standards and design standards. We know that's important for each community to have its own essentially chapter in this book and this toolkit that's tailored to our, our community. So, that's going to be directly developed through this Corder Madera Technical Advisory Working Group, which is there to assist staff and our consultants in making sure that what they're coming up with is appropriate for our community. We had the first meeting where this was sort of explained and laid out for the working group on October 23rd. And here's, here are the folks in that group who are going to be assisting us. So, I've mentioned, you know, obviously Phyllis is part of that. We have Eli, who's an architect and designer from the council, which is great. Bill Rose, who I think you've seen, he spoke at a couple of the accessory dwelling unit meetings. He's also the supervising planner for the city of Santa Rosa. Dan, former planning commissioner, but also comes at it from the development side, which I think is needed and is part of this exercise. Patty, who lived through the, the development of the enclave as she was the homeowners association president next door. So, I think getting down into the details of what was impactful for neighbors when you develop those things. Rich, Rich Pearlstein is the architect. And I, I've told the group, if, and you, you're welcome to, if you think of, if somebody comes up and is really active and wants to be part of this and thinks they have really something they can add from a technical side of things, I'm, I'm saying we have room for one more, but you know, it's, it's flexible to a certain extent. I, I think it gets unwieldy past seven, so I'd like to limit it to an additional person. But let, let me know if you, if you find somebody. We are, here's sort of, I will, I will tell you the expectations that I laid out for the group. One was sort of done at the last meeting, but the primary thing we're looking to have is, is somebody who's going to, like I said, really drill down into the actual review of these documents that our consultants are going to be producing and comment on them and, and make sure that they reflect what we want for Corder Madera. And then there's also three making the recommendations regarding implementation of these through, in, in town, appropriate locations. But the reality is, there's probably, if we're, we're looking at this from the standpoint of responding to state laws, pretty much there's going to be a widespread application of this, I think, was probably a recommendation or the direction we may want to go. And then four is, is just communicating this to the broader community, the purpose and goals, why we're doing this, if things start to get off message or whatnot. The working group can be a place, they'll be open to the public, they can come and see why we're doing this and what the work is that we're doing. So, these are the, sort of the timeline, roughly a 12-month process. We're at that first blue month two stage. And, let me see if I can, yeah. We're sort of here. And so most of the, I'm trying to limit the amount of meetings we actually have with the working group that will come later in the process. From now until that, the next few months, frankly, one, we have the holidays where, but the consultants are really going to start to do some work. The other thing, and Phyllis, we've discussed at our last meeting amongst the working group of the planning directors and our consultants, is having actually in January potentially a, sort of a countywide workshop at maybe four different locations. I don't know if any of you are familiar with what they did for the vulnerability study for client, for sea level rise, and I think there was a, that was done by the County of Marin. I forget what it was called exactly, but they had about four different workshops that actually, I think what's important for us is to make sure that we're all out there with the same message about why we're doing this and the importance of it and what we're trying to accomplish. And so we thought that might be a good idea to have those. If people were interested, they could come at various locations, but we'd have like a Corder Madera Larkspur one here, there may be a Southern Marin one further down, and one in Novato, one in Centerfell or back towards San Soma. That, and there's also going to be a countywide survey, which, just trying to get at least that, the word out again, that's why we're doing this and how people can, if they have actual input that they want to have into this process, they can do so. That's essentially it. That's what I wanted to communicate to all of you. You know, Phyllis is going to be the representative. She, you know, I, my expectation, and Phyllis can do her report outs after we have meetings and if there are things to report out on or reminders. And frankly, if you wanted to, when we get to that portion of the meeting, you're welcome to add anything about the, the first meeting that you're, that you want to do. But I just wanted to keep the commission abreast of what's going on and that this will sort of, you're welcome, any of you are welcome to come to these meetings as well and observe or provide input. As you'll see, we're, we are going to come back at least one more time toward the, before the, the toolkit is finalized, I think, to get your, this commission's feedback and to get public comment on this as well.
Was it the end of January, beginning of February?
This is sort of month four is the-
Oh, you're right.
Is here. So I'm looking down here, which is administrative draft of the, of the Objective Design Standards, which I think would be an appropriate time to come back to the planning commission and start to have some input from the planning commission on that. Either, you know, it would be, it would be mostly an update, but on the work that the working group is doing, that's how I envision this meeting down here. Would be an update on where we are. Obviously, if there were any comments at that point in time, having read the administrative draft, that could be looped back and comments back to the, the team and our, and our consultants. And then ultimately, what we're looking at is month, you know, down here, month 11 would be a more formal discussion of, of the final product and how to implement it and where, you know, where some of the recommendations of the working group are with respect to So it's, we're looking, you know, this is about a 12-month process just to get through the toolkit. Implementation may, may take even longer than that and could involve a much more significant sort of discussion about where to apply this, whether it's specific areas, whether it's specific sites. I envision using this and taking this toolkit and developing a much more robust public outreach discussion about where we should be looking at housing in the community as part of the housing element discussion. Because we know we're going to, about this time, 12 months from now, we're going to have the preliminary numbers from the state about what we're going to have to plan for. And so they're going to be pretty high. I mean, we shall expect that those numbers are going to be triple what we had this last time, which was like 72 units. So, it's going to be a different conversation than we've had and we've had, we've used, and I think the town should take credit for the fact that all of the housing element sites that we laid out in the last housing element have been developed and have been, or at least been approved for development with the Tamarage Enclave, the Robin Drive project. And with the exception of the Warner, Warham Drive, which for various reasons, I think we're not going to be using the next time around. But in any case, so that's sort of, this is state, step one of the ultimate housing planning process, but I think a necessary step and one that I think will position us well for success moving forward. So I'm happy to take any questions on the report. And then, yeah.
Charles? You have interest or?
No, so I actually, so during the volunteer celebration dinner, there was a gentleman that approached me that was interested in the planning commission and how you become a commissioner. He seemed very proactive, he's, you know, in the community. And he gave me his card and so I was at, and he actually does multifamily design, he's FAIA, so I wanted to recommend him so to, for you to reach out to him. So thanks for sharing that and, and making it open because I think it's a way to get him engaged ahead of time to know what he's going to get into.
Which is good.
But, yeah, here you go.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's great.
Any other questions? Comments?
You think we'll not be able to put the center marker trail up for affordable housing in the future? You think they've caught up to us, huh?
Right.
Phyllis, you've been there. Do you, do we want to start into commissioner reports right now?
Okay.
If there's nothing else to ask about this.
Anything else?
Okay. The Tuesday, November 5th meeting of the council. They adopted the new noise ordinance. And I think the most outstanding part of it is gas-powered leaf blowers are banned throughout the entire town. And there are restricted hours for the use of other types of leaf blowers. It's taken a long time to get there, but we got there. And then we get to 6B, the Town Hall Complex Edition, Update and Direction to Staff Regarding Funding Mechanisms, Options and Design in Light of the Latest Cost Estimate. I'm going to pass this down. Todd has now assured me after I gave him what for, that this is just a concept to have something to talk about, but God help us if this is what they wanted to build. I mean, this is why we need design guidelines. What they want to do is- they wanna do is to proceed with design preparation, the architectural and engineering plans. And he gave an update on the fundraising mechanisms for the Town Hall Complex, which has now grown to ten million dollars. I remember when it was about three, then we were working with five or six, and now it's ten. Apparently, the way this looks, they will keep this building, because this was originally a fire station, by the way, from nineteen oh five, if I'm correct. And they will build a building next door that will be raised with parking underneath, but it better be better looking than that. Okay, they introduced...
I'll just say that the reason why it was not designed was because they know that they're gonna come here for, we're gonna come here for a preliminary hearing.
Oh, yes.
The architect to talk about design, and so, yes, that...
But there's the preliminary hearing, like the open kind of design discussion?
Just like the other preliminary hearings we've had before.
Yes. But when you see this drawing on the front page, you'll see what I mean. Okay, moving on, they introduced, you know, they have to introduce an ordinance, and then it comes back a second time. An adoption of the two thousand and nineteen California Building Standards Code and setting a public hearing for the adoption of the ordinance, and the introduction and repea, which would repeal and reenact Chapter fifteen oh two of the Muni Code, adopting the twenty nineteen California Fire Code, International Fire Code, and Appendix A of the International Wildland Urban Interface Code with local amendments supported by local findings and setting of public hearings for adoption of the ordinance. We're gonna have a lot of public hearings coming up. Okay, town manager report, I thought Todd reported on PG&E and what went on, and he mentioned how impressed he was with the decision-making and preparation by our new Public Works Director, RJ Suoco? I'm not sure how to say his name.
It's pronounced Suko.
Suko. Okay. And he mentioned Rebecca putting together that charging center in the community center and setting up all the food. I mean, she's wonderful. But two important points about the outages. The town's gonna be working on connecting the fourteen-lighted intersections in town to generators, so when that, there is another power shut off, the lights at each intersection will continue to work. And I think that's very important for safety. And that is essentially it from that view.
Okay, so does, it's been so long since we had a report out. I can't remember who's supposed to report out. Bob?
Yeah, the September seventeenth meeting of the town council.
Ah!
And it was a report by Todd really about the budget and that we really are in very good shape and will actually zero out our pension liabilities that we're behind on, you know, in twenty twenty-eight or something like that. So, it was really a very good report and that, you know, we've done good with the sales tax. And then he had, this was a preliminary discussion of this wildland parcel tax. So, this was the first discussion of that. And I think Todd is particularly brilliant about explaining things so you can understand them. And he went over the JPA structure and how this was supposed to interact and how these fire agencies and then zones were to fit into it. I had no idea. It didn't make any sense to me. So, anyway, you know, they finalized and actually voted on it at the last one, so.
Well, we have done, in Corder Madara, we, or at least the fire department, Larkspur Corder Madara Fire Department, whatever its name is, has done a good job in making sure people are cutting back, cutting the overhanging thing on the streets of fire engines can get through. And these triple weekends that Corder Madara has, we have probably done seventy-five or eighty percent of the needed job, whereas other cities have not been doing what we've done. So, we're kind of ahead of it a little bit.
So, so we should tax ourselves to help all these other communities?
What, the budget's gonna be, what, twenty-one million dollars a year? You know, we talk means all the time like it's monopoly money.
Right. So, I'm only gonna say that...
Oh, may I have my sneak back that I handed out, please?
On October first, we've had a meeting, since that October first council meeting, that covered the things that the council covered on October first, which has essentially gone to the dogs and the noise ordinance and then the JPA and all that stuff. So, it just developed and covered it. So, there you go. When does the council hear the dog park deal?
It's, no, I don't, that's a good question. I don't know what needs to be finalized on that end, but technically, they don't need to, I don't believe, other than, they have to authorize, I think they may have to authorize some budget for that.
The money.
But other, I'm not sure.
It goes to parks and rec to come up with the rules and regs.
Right. Yes, right. Okay.
So, you weren't here that night, were you? The dog park night? But I think what we settled on our item was, Wreckin Park has gotta figure out how to build a dog park. We're not gonna figure out how to build a dog park.
Exactly. You can do the dog park. Here's the area you can do it in. Yes.
And it's gonna be a thing where hopefully you don't, but Public Works gets drawn into all the dog people saying, I want this and I want that. Okay. Sir, do you have anything else?
I did wanna mention, so next Tuesday at the town council, you may want to look out for the staff report that I will be writing on a discussion and really potential direction or possible direction from the council on whether to initiate a process to amend our design review thresholds, which means like the square footages and whatnot at which you, at which a requirement would be needed or a requirement would be there for applying for and getting a design review permit to, for residential construction and non-residential discretion. So, I will, I will definitely, what I'll do is I will share, when the staff report is ready, I will definitely share it with all of you, so you, you should be aware. No decisions are gonna be made at all, other than whether the town council feels like we should start a process or not.
Are they going, in general, is the discussion up or down? Can you at least, like...
I'll just wait for, I'll send it out to you. I don't wanna send it out at this point or make mention of it.
Got it.
So, I have a question only because next Tuesday, I'm supposed to cover that meeting.
Sure. Can you put your mic on? Sorry. You got the...
Put it on.
The mic, yeah, sorry.
And I will be driving back from Sacramento that day, that evening after a meeting I have to go to. So, I was planning on not being there in person, on watching it on video. Is that gonna cover, be the coverage that the commission wants?
That's how I cover it, by watching it live on TV.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that's gonna give everybody the information they need from the council meeting.
Yeah. But if any, you know, the other thing is if any of the commissioners have strong feelings on this, they, I mean, not as a commissioner, but as a, you know, an individual, you could, you may want to, given that you're very familiar with this, this issue. So, so just a heads up on that.
Regarding coverage, there is a council meeting on December seventeenth. I won't be here. I'm supposed to cover, but they'll probably cancel that meeting.
I think they're actually gonna have it.
Okay.
So, this time. So, I did that, which is a, so maybe the first order of business is we can, we can try to arrange for, you guys do pretty well at arranging for a, and we can discuss it either at the next meeting, December tenth meeting. But who can cover that for you?
Do you wanna trade?
Do a trade. There's trades on the table.
Dr. Bundy, I'll flip.
Okay.
Who are you flipping with?
Dr. Bundy.
Oh.
Oh, I thought you were doing with Margaret.
No, Phyllis went this past week. That's okay.
No, you're gonna be in your easy chair. Just don't fall asleep. So, you know, I'll...
Well, I might be watching it a few days later if I get back into traffic.
Actually, I think it takes, what, eight days or ten days, Bob?
It takes a while.
It's like five, usually about five days.
No, it's never five days. It's always...
Okay.
That's the problem.
All right. The only other thing I wanted to mention, so just on holiday schedule, so, I mean, as is, we've done in the past, unless there was a huge project that we needed to get to, would be to cancel the Planning Commission meeting during the week of Thanksgiving. And then we also are scheduled, our normal schedule would be a meeting on Christmas Eve, which I imagine is not...
Let's do that.
Yeah, right. So, it appears to work with what we have on the calendar, our December tenth meeting. Now, obviously, we're gonna be reviewing this project again, and then we also have another house that you had a preliminary hearing on, but that one fifty-five Summit House is going to be ready for design review discussion at that meeting as well. So, and that was, I think, the only two items.
Yeah, that's the only one I saw.
Do we have to drive up there again?
Yeah, oh, God.
No, not necessarily.
Oh, good.
So, my, our intention as staff would be to send out cancellation notices for those second meeting in November and second meeting in December.
Yes.
So, I just want concurrence from all of you. That's, okay.
That one fifty-five summit was the one that we had heard before?
You, there was a preliminary hearing on it, yes. It was, if you, I wanna, I wanna say everyone was here, but if, if one of the commissioners was absent, yes, please do go back to the preliminary hearing and review the tape and the information that was sent out with that. There was a staff report by Martha as well for that one.
It was a very contemporary house up there on the top.
Yes.
Do we have to vote?
We're gonna vote the minutes and then go home.
Okay, fine.
So, we have before us the meeting minutes of October twenty-second, twenty nineteen. Does anybody wanna make any adjustments to those notes?
No.
Okay. A motion to approve?
I'll move approving the minutes of September tenth.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. I wasn't here.
Abstain for...
Okay. So, I'm sorry, yeah, that was September tenth, October twenty-second.
And now it's October twenty-second. I'll move, I'll move, accepting the minutes for the twenty-second of October.
I'll second that.
Okay. We're...
But I wasn't here. But I was here for the free...
Right, I'll triple it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.